Good evening, everyone. The time is seven, pardon me, seven, I'm getting ahead of myself. 6:30 PM. My name is Aaron Tuckfield. I'm the chairman of the Macomb Township Zoning Board of Appeals, and I am calling this meeting to order. The first item on our agenda tonight was the call to order, and the second item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could stand with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Lawson, could you call the roll?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start with Member Piper.
Here.
Member DeCoster.
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Here.
Member Posey.
Here.
And Member Lawson. All members are present.
Very good. The next item is the conflicts, addressing any conflicts of interest. I think we did this last meeting. We called the roll, and if you have a conflict on any of the items this evening, please signify by saying yes, and if you do not have any conflicts, please signify by saying no. Ms. Lawson, could you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Piper?
No.
Member DeCoster?
No.
Chairman Tuckfield?
No.
Member Posey?
No.
Member Lawson?
No. All right, that takes us on to item five, the approval of the agenda. Before we get into the approval of the agenda this evening, item, I believe it is 7C, has been requested by the petitioner at table. We do this at different times, but because of the way that the agenda is this evening, the item, we're going to do the, or the request to postpone, we're going to address that request in line in the agenda, not one setting it. So, if anybody's here tonight, we do expect that to do, we do expect to take up the postponement at that time, but we're going to take it at the point of the item, so just as so everyone is aware what order we're doing it and how we're doing that. That being said, I will entertain a motion on the agenda for this evening.
Motion to approve. Support?
Motion by Ms. Posey, support by Ms. Lawson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, and tonight's agenda is adopted. Item six is the approval of the previous meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on this item?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes. Support?
Motion by Ms. Posey, supported by Ms. Lawson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, and the previous meeting minutes are approved. That takes us on to seven, which is old business. We have three items of old business this evening, carried over from our last meeting. The first one is a request to vary from section 10.1605G. This is on permanent parcels 082220005, 082220014, and 082220015. Mr. Fadi Oscar is the petitioner. Mr. Box, could you review this? I know we talked about this at our last meeting, but can you bring us up to speed to where we are?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, as you mentioned, the property is located at the southwest corner, 23 and Card. They do have an approved site plan at this time. Due to it being a commercial property, abutting a residential property, a masonry wall is required per ordinance. As you can see, kind of in the image here, the distance from the actual residential properties is roughly 270 feet from the property boundary of the subject site. That's the closest one. Most are well over 300 feet, and it is over 400 feet from a residence to the closest proposed building. The petitioner is seeking a variance to deviate from the required masonry wall. As you can see here, in the approved plan that they do have, the wall is not on the property boundary. Ordinance would require that any fence or wall be on the property boundary. In this case, the property boundary is a drain, so they cannot build the wall in the drain. So, they're already having to set the wall back a little bit, losing some of their property in order to build the wall. It is planned for the bank on the north side of the drain. With that, I did leave a flyer on all of your chairs this evening. That was delivered by Mr. Thompson here late in the day, so I'm sure you probably didn't see it in an email, so I thought I'd print one out for everybody. But essentially, it is an engineering report, looking at the soils and where the wall and the footings for the wall might be. I'm not an engineer, but it does seem to suggest that in some places, they would need to move the wall back even further, as it would not be stable in some of those locations, which would further reduce the size of their usable property. What they are seeking is to produce a vegetative screen wall in lieu of the masonry wall, using some of the natural vegetation that already exists in the area, as well as maybe supplementing with some trees such as arborvitae or pine that will keep the green vegetative buffer in the winter months. Just to reiterate, the natural buffer that does already exist, this is a couple views here. The bottom view is from Card Road, showing the area between this development and the residence to the rear, and the three top pictures are the view from the rear side of this development itself. So, there is a pretty thick vegetative buffer that already exists. You really can't see any structures through there, as is, and I think if supplemented with some conifers or trees that are not going to lose their greenery in the winter months, would really provide the same or a very similar effect. In order to receive such a variance, they have to satisfy a few things. They need to demonstrate that, why they can't be in compliance with the ordinance. I think a lot of that is already evident. They can't build on the property boundary as they're required. I think the last bullet point you see there, that has no impact on public safety or welfare, I think that's pretty straightforward, that there's no safety concerns here, given the distance between the two properties. Really, the one in the middle there is the one that I think Mr. Thompson can talk to a little bit here about demonstrating the practical difficulty, whether substantial relief will allow for more consistent justice. Again, they are already reduced in the size of the usable site because of the drain. They're now going to have to move that further back, as it appears that this engineering report, should they be required to build the wall. I think the staff does see that as a little bit of a hardship, but I'll let Mr. Thompson speak to that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Box. Mr. Thompson, if you could identify yourself for the record and give any additional comments you might have.
My name is Bill Thompson from Lehner Associates. Address is 1700119 Mile Road, Clinton Township, 48038. I'm here representing Mr. Fadi Oscar, the owner of the property and the developer, the current operator of the Buschamys on the corner. We've got had site plan approval now for a considerable period of time. We've been working on the engineering. We're still waiting for final word from the DEQ on the relocated floodplain. The wall that we're talking about is at the top of the bank of the relocated floodplain. In some instances, I don't know if you've read the report or not, in some instances, the wall is five or six foot above the existing ground, as it is now. In order to put the wall in place, the wall requires a 42-inch deep footing. When you start going more than four or five feet deep with the footing, you have trouble with the installation. And again, this is a long wall. It's not like it's a footing for a garage or something. We're talking about 500, 600 foot long, exposing the trench for a period of time, and then, because you're not going to dig a trench and pour the concrete right behind it. That doesn't work that way. You have to open up the trench, and then pour the concrete behind it with this reinforcing. That becomes quite cumbersome and expensive. Also, the ground elevation on the drain side of the wall is the floodplain elevation, 60160. The parking lot, and the buildings obviously, but the parking lot is designed to be above the floodplain, so there will not be any floodplain in the parking lot. That puts the gutter line at the edge of the parking. Could you switch back to the site plan? These areas right at the edge of the parking lot, along here, we'll have our catch basins located there, so that the elevation of the parking lot in those locations is 60160, same as a floodplain. But then, you've got a curb that goes up, and then you've got the landscaping in there, so that the grade at the developed side of the wall is either going to be higher than the grade on the other side, so it's an unbalanced wall, or you're going to put drain walls, or drain holes through the wall to allow the water to escape if you're pitching it back towards the wall. If you have the holes in the wall, usually four inch or six inch holes, and they're usually put four, or five or 10 feet apart. When you get a decent rain, that's, basically, you've got water shooting out through those holes, and it's going to initiate erosion. So, that's, to me, that's two steps against the wall, two strikes against the wall. We have two options to look at. One was the original petition was for a segmented wall, where the segmented wall would sit about that far above the ground. You could drain towards it, so it would drain into the floodplain. You would have sheet drainage underneath the wall, so you wouldn't have the erosion problem. And the anchor posts for the wall, every 10 feet, they're usually put down five foot into the ground anyway, and you dig the hole, you pour the concrete, you put the post in. It's not like you're going to have an exposed trench for any period of time. As an alternate to that, we propose possibly putting in landscaping, which is, does the same thing, as far as provides a screen. And the landscaping and the sectional wall, both are a lot easier to maintain, to work around. You don't have weeds growing up around them. You can weed whack right underneath the wall, the segmented wall, where if you have a sectional, a regular wall, poured wall there, it's more difficult. You've got to work with the footing, and maintaining it is more difficult. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to respond to them.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any questions from the board? Mr. Thompson?
Real quick, based on this engineering report, if I'm reading this right, even with the sectional, you'd have trouble with putting footings in? Did I read that correct in certain spots? The soil would erode anyway?
The sectional wall would eliminate the erosion problem with the drainage.
Okay, they were saying about the native soils, though, and...
About the sandy soils?
Right.
That's going to be there no matter what you do.
Okay. The way I was reading this, it was saying that you would still have trouble even with a sectional wall, getting the footings in because of erosion. Am I reading that wrong? I just...
If something were to happen to a sectional wall, it's a lot easier to fix.
Okay.
Is the variance for the precast, precast screen wall, or are you giving us the option?
The variance request at this time is for the landscaped buffer in lieu of the masonry wall, and I think what he's suggesting is, if you felt that wasn't sufficient, that they would be willing to do the sectional wall.
And I guess the intent of our ordinance is that for a noise buffer and a security buffer, or is it simply to buffer the residential from the commercial district?
I think it's just a buffer from the residential to the commercial. I think it does affect noise, as well as, you know, if it's a security situation, someone might walk through, I think it'd be difficult regardless here to walk through with a drain right there. But I think it's noise as well as light.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. I believe we did a public hearing last time. I don't think we are required to have anybody up, but I don't have a lot of people here tonight. I think we're going to ask if anyone else has comments. Is there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the board for questions, comments, or motions.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information that's provided tonight, at the last meeting, we were waiting for a report from the engineering, which Mr. Thompson has provided to us. And basically, what it's spelling out is that they can't put the masonry wall on the property boundary, because the drain is on the property boundary line. It's questionable that if they did the second alternative, that that would even hold up due to the circumstances of the soil. So, at this point, I would make a motion to allow for the landscape buffer in lieu of a required six-foot-high decorative masonry wall.
All right, motion by Ms. Posey. Is there any support?
I will support that.
Motion by Ms. Posey, support by Ms. Lawson. Ms. Lawson, could you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Member Posey?
Yes.
Lawson, yes. Tuckfield?
Yes.
DeCoster?
Yes.
And Mr. Piper?
Yes. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you've put into this.
Thank you.
This took a little while.
All right, switch back to my agenda here. That takes us on to item 7B, which is another item of old business. This is a request to vary from section, actually, I believe that this is a sign exemption, not a variance request, if I remember correctly. Mr. Box, you can correct me. But that'll be section 20-13. C. Point four, permanent parcel 0818-326002. Lawrence Warden is the petitioner. Mr. Box, could you bring us up to speed on this one as well?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know you've all heard this a few times already. I think Mr. Skurdo spoke to you on this last time. He's unable to be here tonight, so I'll try to walk through some of these slides that he has here. Essentially, the front of this building is on Industrial Drive. The side is on 23 Mile. Actually, the side is adjacent to another property that's undeveloped, and then 23 Mile. The front of the building would be allowed an 85-square-foot sign. The ordinance says that the side of the building would be allowed a 17.2 square foot at this requested location, and they are seeking an exception, a sign exception. And in order to receive such an exception, there are seven items that you see listed there that must be addressed, and that the ZBA must take into consideration when deciding on this matter. With regards to obstruction, a conforming sign, I don't think would cause any obstruction or endanger public health or safety, nor would the sign that they're proposing. Construction of a conforming sign would not require removal or severely alter any features on the site, nor would the sign that they're proposing on the side. The request to change in the location will allow for a temporary increase in visibility from 23 Mile. That is one of the criteria, visibility. Obviously, there's a lot more traffic on 23 Mile than there is on Industrial Drive, so it would promote visibility up until that neighboring parcel is developed. A conforming sign would be visible from Industrial Drive, but probably not from 23 Mile, which is what they're seeking to do. So, in terms of visibility, it would be much more visible on 23 Mile. The 85, the requested 85-foot sign does meet the requirements if it were installed on the front of the building. Again, I think we've talked about this before. They're seeking to essentially flip those two. That's the exception they're seeking. So, what would be allowed on the front, they want on the side, and what would be allowed on the side is what they want on the front. If granted the exception, it would not likely adversely impact the character or appearance of the area, and the applicant would be asked to demonstrate that the exception is the minimum necessary to allow for reasonable use of the sign in terms of visibility from 23 Mile.
All right, thank you, Mr. Box. To the petitioner, did you have any additional comments on this item?
No, I think he summed it up very well.
All right. Anyone from the board have any questions for Mr. Box or the petitioner?
The only thing I notice, there's an awful lot of trees and growth on that vacant property between the building and 23 Mile. I don't know that a bigger sign will even help them that much. I mean, yes, there is more visibility, but I don't know how much more visibility you're going to get, as long as that growth is out there. There's trees, huge shrubs, everything else. But I do see the difficulty, and the fact that they're willing to switch it if the building does, you know, go in that other property, I do see a practical difficulty, in my opinion, anyway.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Piper. Anyone else? I think we do the same thing I did with the last one. I think we had public comment open on this one last meeting, but does anyone wish to comment on this item from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the board. I did have a question for the property owner. I know he's here tonight. We've had some discussions at the planning commission level relative to business, and I know, and I think I asked you this in the past, but I think one of our concerns last meeting was we were having some technical difficulties, so just want to make sure we're all on the same page. One of the things you had mentioned at the planning commission level was that significant portion of the business was coming from e-commerce. I think at the time, it was because of parking requirements. You had less parking, and that was one of the things that was brought up. Seems like maybe it conflicts with this request a little bit. Can you just speak to the balance of the business and why the sign might be necessary in this location relative to what you had discussed with us before on the balance of your business?
Great. My name is Kevin Zakarski, 54470 Salem, Shelby Township. The sign itself will help for e-commerce in putting the thoughts into people's minds for products. In our world today, people are only being influenced by YouTube, social media, things of that nature. In the past 18 months, even traffic itself was slow. Now, the traffic on 23, especially with construction there, people drive by and just see the word pools. Google. Okay? We have many customers. We're doing web deliveries, FedEx, UPS, just because they know they're there. And so, they call us up and say, hey, I saw your sign. Even our help wanted sign that's out there, hey, you know, my kids are looking for a job. Again, there's no monument sign out there that describes the products in there. So, we're not trying to advertise our company name. We're advertising the products we're selling, and that's the point. And when people get an influence of that, hmm, Google. Call us, we talk. We sold a lot of product this year that we never received the customer, all done by phone and video talking. That's why we're just using those signs. And of course, that intersection where Industrial and 23 is at, there is no, no lights at all in that area. I came home from the baseball game two nights ago, and the only reason I knew where the street was, the orange cone stopped at the street. So, that will help give a little bit of light. You're absolutely true. The growth over there is great in Orange. Now, when a new building goes in over there, wonderful, there's going to be new lights, new that, and I'll be very, very happy, and we'll have a nice establishment as the years go on. So, that's what we want to do it for.
I appreciate it. Any other questions, comments?
I know before, we've talked about the monument sign at 23 Mile. Is there a reason why there can't be a monument sign along 23 Mile to do, essentially, do the same thing?
I don't, I'm not part of that industrial park and how it was built, so I couldn't answer that question.
Mr. Box, do you know if our monument signs allowed on 23 Mile there?
Yes, they are. They would have to be developed and likely paid for through the subdivision association. My understanding is that subdivision association is essentially defunct and is not in existence right now.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Box. I know our sign ordinance is currently being reviewed for potential amendments. If, in fact, that were done at this time, would this request for the variance would have changed or been affected by any amendments that we would make?
I don't think, in this situation, it would be affected, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I do have just a question on procedure. Mr. Box, and this might be to Mr. Orlando, too. I believe this is a sign exception. When making a motion one way or the other, where if we grant or deny, it's granting or deny an exception. Is there any specific things that we should be calling out that would be different from a variance request?
No, just it's an exception rather than a variance under the ordinance.
Okay. And Mr. Box, just to summarize, in your mind, this meets the requirements for the exception?
I think it meets the exception requirements, yes.
All right. Any other questions or motions?
Mr. Chairman, just one. When we do make the motion, should we include that if, in fact, when there is building on that adjacent property, that the signs then will be moved? Do we need to address that in the motion, or is that something that we'll just...
I believe we discussed that last time. I think Mr. Aloia said that that was something we could appropriately put, and actually, thank you for reminding. I do want to just make sure the petitioner understands this, and it would be acceptable, that part of the motion, that it would be...
100% agree.
And actually, this might have been where we stuck on our discussion last time. I think the conversation was removed within 90 days of a CFO for the neighboring parcel, I think was what we had talked about.
I agree.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would, are you okay with that language?
Yes, I think that's what we discussed, that we needed to put a timeframe based on something physical, and so CFO is an established date. It will be date stamped when they get a CFO, and so 90 days, I think, is an appropriate amount of time for them to move the sign.
Okay, and you're okay with that, Mr. Orlando?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Lawson, any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to allow a building-mounted sign on a side that does not have road frontage to exceed the size permitted, with the condition that the sign is removed within 90 days of the adjoining or parcel receiving their CFO.
Support?
Motion by Ms. Posey, supported by Ms. Lawson. Ms. Lawson, could you call the roll?
Yes. Member Posey?
Yes.
Member Lawson, yes. Chairman Tuckfield?
Yes.
Member DeCoster?
No.
Member Piper?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Good to see you in person.
Yes, it's a good thing. All right, this takes us on to item 7C. This is a request to vary from section 20.13. C. Actually, I should say not vary, but another sign exception. This is for permanent parcel 0807-30016. The petitioner is Meyer Inc. Mr. Box, just briefly, I think the petitioner has requested this to be postponed. Are we looking at a date certain? What's...
Yes, they specifically request postponement until next month's meeting, which is September 2nd.
September 2nd, all right. With that, I will entertain a motion to postpone this item until September the 2nd.
So, do, Mr. Chairman, I make that motion?
Motion by Ms. Lawson. Is there support?
I will support that. Oh, go ahead, Dave.
I think Mr. Piper got it first. Motion by Ms. Lawson, supported by Mr. Piper, to postpone this item until September the 2nd. Ms. Lawson, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Member Lawson, yes. Member DeCoster?
Yes.
Member Piper?
Yes.
Member Tuckfield?
Yes.
Member Posey?
Yes.
That item is postponed until the 2nd, and we will see it then. That moves us on to item 8A, which is new business. This is a variance request from the zoning ordinance, two different sections, 10.0323. C. Point 2. E., and 10.1202. A. Point 3. Permanent Parcels 0826-351-011 and 012, and the petitioner is JS Capital Group. Mr. Box, could you take us through this, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to point out, there was some information, supplemental information sent today. I wasn't sure if you guys would all be able to get to your emails and review that, so I did print a copy and leave it up there for you.
Much appreciated.
As you mentioned, located at 21 and Card, the northeast corner, they are seeking two separate variances, one for a parking reduction, as well as one to reduce the requirement for the amount of outdoor play area. The applicant has asked for the reduction in parking. They did provide a parking study, which you should have had in your packet, to show how many spaces that they feel they would need. They're proposing 62 spaces, as opposed to the 85 that would be required per ordinance. I think that a grant of the variance would allow them to be built within the demonstrated number of spaces based on their parking study, which was based on another location of a similar structure, similar use. I believe it's another location within their chain, actually, of daycare or academies. I think the spirit of the ordinance would still be observed by granting this, so long as it's confirmed or felt by the board that what they show in their parking reduction is valid. I know times are always changing. We've been through a number of these. I think any business that has a feel for how many parking spaces they need, it's their business, and I think that the spirit of the ordinance wouldn't necessarily be obstructed, you know, should that be granted. That being said, I think some of our parking ordinances are a little outdated, and I think we've talked about that before as well. That being said, I think some of our, our parking ordinances are, are a little outdated, and I think we've, we've talked about that before as well. We, we often go to shopping centers and see large seas of concrete or asphalt with, with no cars parked there. Uh, with regards to the outdoor play area size request, um, so the state of Michigan actually requires twelve hundred square feet. Uh, township ordinance is a little bit uh more cumbersome, requiring five thousand square feet. What they're proposing is one thousand nine hundred eighty-three square feet of outdoor play area, which would meet the state's requirement, it would not meet the township's requirement. What's not included in that uh is the fact that they also have one thousand sixty-four square feet of indoor play space and a gymnasium. Um, our ordinance doesn't uh take that into consideration. Uh, so they do actually have a total of three thousand forty-seven square feet of play space. A grant of the variance uh would, would still have them meet the state of Michigan requirements, so you wouldn't, they would not be in violation of any statutes uh from the state of Michigan. This, the spirit of the ordinance will be observed uh by granting of this request so long as, as state regulations are met for the use, and I think that's the, the general opinion of staff. Um, so that being said, I, I think we're comfortable recommending approval, um, so long as the applicant can demonstrate, you know, that, that they truly do need that reduced number, or, or that that reduced number is sufficient for their use, and as, as well as how that may impact stacking into the right of way and confirmation that all state of Michigan rules pertaining to this type of use would still be met.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Box. Uh, I believe the petitioner is here, sir, if you could state your name and address for the record and give any comments you might have?
Yes, Bob Kirk nineteen five hundred Hall Road, Clinton Township, Michigan. I'm here with the developer of the property, the landowner, and also the architect. Thank Josh for the great summary on this one. Uh, this is an odd parcel, um, it seems to be kind of left over from the development days. Uh, zoned R one, which I don't think that use is, is a use that can be developed in that way. Uh, another option would be a commercial use, which again, you have some issues with regard to the residents, which you need to protect on the east side. So, we have this use here, it, it's a good use, we're gonna be asking to be conditionally rezoned for that use to community facility. The user is Premier Academy, they've been around since two thousand nine, they have three other locations, Oakland Township, Rochester Hills, and Northville. They're an early childhood development daycare, day camp type of use. They're able to use their other facilities for studies to support our requests, but the two ordinances that we are asking for variances from, I don't think really apply to this type of use, and I'll go through that, but, and I'm not taking that as a slight, because I've represented communities for twenty-five years, you get these ordinances, the national companies produce, and you use it, you use it, and you run into something like this, and you find it really shouldn't be or isn't applicable to this. For example, the parking, the one per two hundred square feet, that's the same it is for an office building. So if you had an office building full of accountants, uh, uh, insurance agents, their support staff, I can't remember how many people, getting there, getting there, but you're parking that, the two, one per two hundred supports that, in this case, there's at most twenty employees, the rest are the little ones who don't drive, so, I think the one per, per two hundred is outdated, maybe it was drafted back in the days before these were more pre- prevalent, prevalent. Anyway, the one in Rochester that they operate only has thirty-seven spaces, they have no problem, and if there was a problem, they wouldn't be, you know, developing this type, putting this money into this if that was gonna be a problem with parking. So, that's with regard to our first variance, the second one is the outdoor play area, as Josh said, five thousand feet's required. Your ordinance states that the five thousand's required, but doesn't match it up to any size of a building, so if you had a thirty thousand foot building, you have five thousand feet, if you had five thousand, you had five thousand feet. Uh, the five thousand seems excessive considering the state requirements, and the state is happy with our other facilities, and we have the indoor area. So for those reasons, I think we meet the three factors of the rec- set forth in the ordinance, I think it's a good use for this area, I think it protects the residents to the east, uh, and we'd like to proceed on this matter.
Very good, thank you, sir. Any questions for the petitioner?
Well, you partially answered the question I had, is how many employees? Because typically you're gonna have, you said twenty employees, that's gonna take up twenty spaces right there.
Right, but we have.
But your study shows in many cases, there's only eleven cars parked at a certain time. And that, and the other thing is the drop off, I've, I've got a little bit of experience with this, and my one daughter worked in daycare for years. And most parents don't just drive in to drop off, they park. So, I, I'm, I'm wondering about these numbers, um, how many cars are actually parked at one time? If you've got twenty employees, that's twenty cars right there. If, and, you know, a lot of, at certain times of the day, you're gonna have a lot more people dropping off kids and picking up kids. Uh, I'm kind of curious as, how many cars are actually gonna be there at one time, you know, at peak times at least?
I can bring Jeff up here to this, but we have forty extra spaces in Rochester, like I said, thirty-seven works, but Jeff is the one with the experience and.
And if you could, sir, just also state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Jeff Schmitz with JS Capital, uh, one five five Romeo Road, Rochester, Michigan.
Thanks, Josh.
So when it, so when it comes to the parking counts and, and the times, we submitted uh to the township, we do our own internal studies, and we do that because, you know, I'm a developer, I've developed multiple different types of properties in my lifetime. This property here is one that, this would be our fourth location, and um we've run into this issue multiple times. Oakland Township has a different ordinance, uh, Northville has a different ordinance, Rochester Hills is, we're building the exact same facility as Rochester Hills. So, um, I thought some of you are in the township has, have visited that, that facility of ours, and it's, it's, it's an amazing facility, but when, getting back to the car counts, we open at six thirty in the morning, our curriculum doesn't start until, we're, we're a education-based facility from six weeks, you know, to kindergarten. So, not, our, our education day starts at nine o'clock, so our drop off fluctuates from six thirty in the morning all the way till nine o'clock. So we don't get that huge rush, so what I did was, uh, we actually, I had somebody go out and count uh cars every fifteen minutes throughout the day for a whole week, during peak time, you know, not in the summertime where you have camps, but during peak time. So at seven o'clock, we had uh, uh, eight, eight cars in the parking lot, and three in the turnaround, which would be your stacking, you know, your drop off. Seven fifteen, fourteen, and then four in the turnaround, total of eighteen. And it stays pretty much about the same until eight o'clock, you end up with twenty-three in the parking lot, and eight in the turnaround. Twenty-four at eight fifteen, twenty-five at eight thirty, twenty-four at eight forty-five, nine o'clock twenty-seven, ten o'clock twenty-eight, on and on, and it, and then it starts uh picking up again right around four o'clock, back to twenty-one, nineteen, eighteen, nineteen. And this is throughout the whole week, every fifteen minutes, we, we, we did our own study. And we also prepared a, kind of a diagram that we had submitted, arriving and departing, and, and what times these are happening. So between seven forty and eight forty in one hour, we'll have seventy cars that will arrive and sixty cars depart.
Yeah, it's been my experience, because there's literally, there's a childcare facility on the corner by my house, and the people park usually for five minutes. They don't like to drop off, they actually like to park and walk their children in.
They do, and it's about five minutes, you're right.
It is a short-term parking, if you will, it's the employees, basically, that are gonna be there all day.
For sure.
No, so I, I see that, I just, I'm kind of curious, because I, I just don't picture people doing a drive-through to drop off their kids, I really don't.
You'd be surprised, you know, about thirty percent or twenty percent of the parents are, they're late for work, so they are going into the drive-through, basically, and, you know, in and out.
One more quick question, how many students do you expect the, the facility to, to host?
Uh, this facility, I don't know exactly, I think about a hundred and eighty students if you were, you know, a hundred percent capacity. I mean, you're never really a hundred percent capacity, because you have part-timers and you have full-timers, and, you know, the ratios and, and things of that nature.
It, it looked like from the drawing that they're gonna be, be going in a counterclockwise for the drop-offs, it looks like?
Correct.
That's how the flow would go?
Correct.
Just trying to get a visual in my head here. One more quick question for you, Mr. Box. Do you know why our ordinance uh for the play area is five thousand versus the state?
I do not, it, that was written long before I was here.
Huge difference, that's what I wondered, yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Very good, Ms. Posey?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, so, um, if, when, what year did you do the, your conductor traffic study in?
Uh, this traffic study happened to be that I did, uh, this is only cars that come into our property. And this one was done uh in Oakland Township on the corner of Rochester Road and Snell, of which I think we have about sixty spaces. And at any, at our very busiest time where we had cars parked were forty-one spots. And we might have sixty, sixty-two spaces. But we have five acres there, and it's, it's not a two-story, it's mo- more sprawled out. So we had to do this for Rochester Hills, and we also had to do it for Northville, because everybody wants to know, how many cars do you need? So we literally um counted cars every fifteen minutes.
Your, um, most of your argument in here, it compares it to Rochester Hills, and that's fairly, it's a fairly new building, correct?
Yeah, it opened uh a year ago in June, right after COVID. It's almost identical building.
So if I can interrupt, Ms. Posey, I think you'd asked when the study was, was being taken, so if, if the building opened in June of last year, is fair to assume that that hap- that study happened sometime last year?
No, that study happened probably, if we opened, we, it took a year to build it and a, a year through planning and zoning, so it would have been probably twenty nineteen. From an existing school of, of Premier Academy Oakland that has sixty spots. Uh, we only have thirty-six in Rochester Hills, and we have, I think, eight in a stacking lane.
So this study was done in Oakland?
Oakland.
Previous to the Rochester facility you're?
Correct, and, and uh Premier Academy Oakland would be as full as any facility we've ever had, and it holds two hundred and thirteen, we're licensed for two hundred and thirteen students. Uh, this one here, I think we'd be licensed for a hundred and eighty students, so it's gonna be a little bit smaller as far as the student ratio goes, but we needed to prove that in Rochester Hills. And you can go by the site anytime, it's on the corner Adams and Tinkin'.
So I have one more question, so the, the ordinance requires, I believe it's eighty-five parking spaces? If I'm correct, I'm just trying to get the, yes, and then you indicated in here that um if you were approved for the, is it thirty-seven, you would have six stacking spaces, am I correct on that?
Correct, if we were approved, we'd have, I think it's sixty-two. Two spaces. Plus the stacking, I believe.
So I, you know, I kind of mirror Mr. Uh, Piper's concerns on the stacking. Um, and, and I'm, that's more of an issue that would probably be um discussed at a planning commission meeting, but I'm just curi- if you were to remain um required to have the eighty-five spaces, would you include more stacking spaces?
We wouldn't be able to probably uh do the project.
I guess that would be another, maybe a future question for Planning Commission, but just out of curiosity, why wouldn't you do the drop off in the back of the building?
Well, when we had our pre-planning, we had, uh, we discussed with the fire marshal, and we needed that, the access all the way around the building.
Okay.
For fire trucks.
Okay.
And it's actually identical, the Rochester Hills, the fire department there as well required that.
Well, my concern, when I looked at the site plans and on GIS for Rochester Hills, is where the academy is located, the surrounding um use around it is residential and the high school.
Correct.
And the high school has limited traffic, you know, none during the summer, and then usually has probably peak times in the morning and mid-afternoon.
Correct.
Where this area is heavy commercial and residential, it's basically surrounded by heavy commercial, so I'm just more concerned with the buildup of traffic onto Card Road, which is already a heavily congested area. That's my biggest concern that I have with the, the parking itself. I think you've proved that um you can reduce the amount of parking spaces, but the concern is the stacking for the public safety part of it, that I have.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, you know, a, a great question and concern. Um, like I said, our, our traffic is spread out over three hours, right? From six thirty till, you know, when our curriculum starts at nine, nine thirty, so that flow of traffic is just, you know, um, over a period of three hours. And then, we lose a lot of students at around noon, right after lunchtime, because they only go half-day. So then our evening is lessened, because, you know, we don't have full-time students going from six to six usually. Usually, there's a lot of stay-at-home moms that just want to introduce their, their children to some sort of education and stimulus. Therefore, you know, our traffic departure is, starts at noon or right after lunch, all the way until six thirty in the evening.
Thank you.
Quick question, quick question on the parking, is it an issue with room to provide the adequate parking, or your use doesn't need the parking?
Our use does not need the par- you know, parking at all, I mean, one of the gentlemen said earlier that you'd have a sea of concrete, I mean, you would have a sea of concrete.
I just wanted to clarify, it's, so it's not necessarily that the, the site doesn't allow you to put in the parking, you're saying your specific use does not?
We, we wouldn't be able to get in eighty-four spaces, uh, because I think one of your township ordinances requires a detention pond, as opposed to underground detention tanks.
Yeah, which was, yeah, I was just gonna mention, that was one of the things I was noticing about this, when this, then this site would have been parceled off, uh, the Public Works Commission had different requirements for the site, you know, that the size of the site wouldn't have really included the, the space for a retention or detention basin, which is one of the significant com- encumbrances on the site, I think. Honestly, you could, I think you can make the case that it's a practical difficulty all by itself. So, anyway, go ahead, Ms. Posey.
If I may, um, this question is for Mr. Box, you had indicated that our parking ordinance may be slightly outdated. Um, would you agree that that is affecting this, their ability to reduce the amount of parking spaces that they are currently requesting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none, I'm gonna take it out to the public, uh, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, and if I have no uh requests, not to, I'm gonna close the public portion and bring it back to the board, is there any additional questions or comments? Mr. Box, do you have any other comments for us here?
Uh, no, not really, I, I guess I would touch on what he did mention with the detention basin, uh, as you saw the layout, if you look at the area behind you, it, that's, that's kind of another hindrance of the site, that there's um, that northernmost piece was actually a separate parcel, part of a platted neighborhood, uh, where they would not allow to be put, uh, putting their daycare facility, so that piece can only be used for the detention basin, uh, so that further narrows the area that they can put the structure.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Box. Mr. Orlando, I know I haven't done this, but I've, I've been thinking I need to do this, do you have any comments before we go into motions, anything you want to add?
I do not, thank you.
Very good. Um, with that said, uh, I'd just make one comment before we go into motions, and that is that I do have concerns as well about the stacking. Um, I don't know that the stacking in the parking lot, parking spaces being removed necessarily bears upon each other, other than we're looking at parking and stacking at the same time, but I travel that intersection enough that um, obviously, a busy parking lot is one thing, but a busy parking lot backed out onto Card Road is probably not a great thing if it was to happen. So, uh, just a comment for the future, um, that I wanted to make sure I put on the record. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for any motions. Uh, and remember that we have two variance requests, I think it'd be proper to treat these separately, um, as they are two different requests.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, uh, it will be to approve the variance, uh, ten dot zero three two three dot C dot two dot E, to reduce the number of parking spaces from eighty-five to sixty-two.
Very good, motion by Mr. DeCoster, is there any support?
I will second that motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Discussion by Ms. Posey, go ahead.
If I may, request amendment to the emotion, due to the concerns that we've all expressed, um, with regards to the stacking, I would like to ask Mr. DeCoster if he would amend the motion to um include that it's with the condition that the site plan is approved, as is by the Planning Commission, so that that item's addressed.
I will make that uh amendment to my amendment.
I will support that amendment, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Box, I know we had discussion about, um, about uh requests such as this, do you have any comments on this amendment, any, any thoughts?
I would have no concern with that condition being placed on, on that.
Okay, very good. Um, alright, there is a motion on the floor, is there any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, I will give it to Ms. Lawson, Ms. Lawson, could you call the roll, please?
Thank you. Um, member DeCoster?
Yes.
Member Piper?
Yes.
Member Tuckfield?
Member Tuckfield?
Yes.
Member Posey?
Yes.
And Slosson, yes.
All right, that motion passes that variance, cause it is a variance. We've been doing sign exceptions tonight, so I'm gonna be clear there. That variance has been granted. Uh, this brings us to the second request, uh, which is with regards to the outdoor play area from five thousand to one thousand nine hundred and eighty-three square feet. Is there any motions on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve section ten point one two zero two point A, point three to reduce the outdoor play area from five thousand square feet to nineteen eighty-three square feet. As the petitioner has provided documentation that indicates that the state of Michigan rules pertaining to this type of use will be met.
Motion by Ms. Posey, is there any support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Slosson, um, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Ms. Slosson, could you please call the roll?
Yes, uh, Member Posey?
Yes.
Uh, Slosson, yes. Uh, Chairman Tuckfield?
No.
Member DeCosta?
Yes.
And Member Piper?
Yes.
Uh, that motion passes four to one, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hope, uh, the rest of the process goes well for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that completes item eight A, uh, takes us on to item nine, which is public comments. Uh, this is for anyone in the audience, uh, who wishes to speak. Uh, if you wish to speak, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record and give any comments you might have.
My name is Linda Maynerich, I live at one five seven two one Camden Drive, Macomb Township. I, I came here tonight, I mean, I've been here at the past few meetings regarding Meyer. And I came here tonight even knowing that it was postponed because I just wanted to hear how the other variances were treated. Um, I do see a difference. I'd like you guys to know that I do see a difference and just for the fact of you guys asking about concerned with backups on the road for a very congested parking lot. But yet that same concern was not addressed with Meyer. It's gonna have two entrances, one off of twenty-four, one off of Hayes. The truck traffic is going to use the same in, entrances and exits as the customers will use. So I guess what I'm asking is fair treatment. I, I don't, I know Meyer is a big corporation and maybe you guys are scared of lawsuits, but the way this is being handled is, is ridiculous. I mean, you have four thousand signatures on a, on a petition from change.org of people against it. You guys have approved exceptions, variances, special land usage. We don't need another pharmacy drive-through, we already have two at that intersection. Why do we need three pharmacy drive-throughs at that intersection? It's, traffic is one direction each way. That's it. Go down there this week while twenty-five is under construction. It took me ten minutes just to go from twenty-four in Hayes and I am the first street east, right behind where that development is gonna go. Ten minutes just to go that short distance. And I believe on McComb County scanner that Charles Gray, he posted something yesterday or the day before. A picture of all the traffic that he was stuck in and how long it took him to get through just that, that small section. Now there's gonna be a hundred and fifty more houses being built just down the road? It, it, there, I just want fair treatment. And you guys need to look at yourselves. We went, we were told that we were supposed to take our concerns to the Planning Commission? The Planning Commission didn't listen to us at all. You guys, it, it was, it was, everything was approved, ignoring the residents' concerns. You guys did not have, you guys do not have to pass variances. You do not have to approve special land usages. Those are outside the ordinance. And I, this, since what, July first, this is the first time you've ever seen me in this building. I've been a resident of McComb Township since nineteen ninety-seven. So that tells you that I am taking the time away from my family and coming back from my cottage to come here? That's how concerning it is. The only reason this is empty here is because, yeah, we were passing it out that it was postponed tonight. But I want you to hear the concerns. You guys have a duty to represent residents, not just commercial properties. But giving that gentleman a, a, you know, difficult time about his signs? You guys mentioned that there's an amendment to the sign ordinance? Once I'm done speaking, if you, when public speaking is done, I would like to know, when do you plan on changing that sign, um, ordinance? And is that gonna benefit Meyer? And is that why they're being po- postponing their sign variance? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kimberly Becker, five three one two three Bayberry Drive. Um, I do also, um, have many concerns as you've heard in the past. Um, some of the things that I would like to, again, bring forth is, again, the traffic. Um, Tuesday evening at six o'clock, I was all the way back on Twenty-four Mile Road, backed up to Shaner. It took me fifteen minutes to go from Shaner to Hayes at six o'clock in the evening. In the morning to go to work, I go west out of Bayberry Drive and, um, no, east. And every morning, I wait at least five to ten minutes to get out of the sub. That's without this new store going in. Uh, my concern still is, I, I really would like to have the dates that, um, the traffic, um, study was done. Having the date of when it was approved is not when the study was done, because we do see the traffic is now increasing for whatever reason. Um, and that's concerning, cause school's not even back in session. Um, I know myself, I didn't go back to work until after this traffic study may have been, um, done and completed. And, you know, now going back to work, many people are going back and there's still a lot of people that have not returned to work. So there's probably a flaw in that. I just thank you for your time and consideration. I'm also on a board, um, not a township board, um, but I do understand that, you know, things are done behind the scenes, um, your discussions and whatnot. And I would really urge you to consider all of the passionate community members, not just in our subdivision, but within the township and also in Shelby Township. Thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, David Conickson, one five seven one five Camden Drive, I live li- right next door to Linda. And my huge concern is with the traffic. Um, I've been in, I've been in the neighborhood since two thousand and every day, there's three times a day, morning, noon and night. It takes me ten, fifteen minutes to turn off on my street, I'm on Bayberry to turn on the Twenty-four Mile. Don't even try to turn left to go the other direction. So when all this vehicles, these trucks and everything are gonna be there, it's gonna be backed up. I have requested from the, the road commission, a copy of the study, I don't know if you've received, if you have a copy of it. It was at the last zoning meeting, but I've requested a copy, cause I don't think it's a sufficient report done, cause the gentleman said it was done in early April. Kids were not in school. So there was no real traffic in that area for when they did their study. And I like to know what they use to measure the flow of traffic in and out, because from where the, if the store goes in, people are gonna come through the sub, down my street in order to get out. And that's just gonna back it up even more. So that's my huge concern is the amount of traffic that's gonna be, we just went through the expansion, having that water main put in there. All that weight is gonna be on there and everything, and I'm just concerned what's gonna happen there with the more traffic. And there's accidents, every other weekend, there's an accident at, at intersection. In fact, I'm going to McComb County Sheriff to find out a trap, when the accidents are happening, but there's more and more happening. You add a store, you add the subdivision, there's gonna be more vehicles, there's gonna be more accidents. And there are usually fatal accidents, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think all the public who is here tonight have spoken, so I'm gonna ask if there's anyone else who wishes to speak, but, uh, I don't think there's anybody else here. So, uh, with, uh, with no objections, I'm going to close the public portion. Uh, actually, close the public portion at seven thirty-one and bring it back to the board. Uh, and I don't have my agenda and I'm already, I don't remember what the next item, I believe the next item is board member comments. Uh, yes, it is ZBA member comments, any comments from the members this evening?
I would just like to notify the board, and I've already notified Mr. Box, that I am unable to attend the September second meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you for letting us know. Any other, any other comments? I had two, uh, the first one would, uh, be, I'm not sure if, uh, Ms. Becker mentioned this or Ms. Maynerich mentioned this. We do have to maintain, uh, open, uh, and abide by the Open Meetings Act. So this board, there may be other things that happen with staff where they're discussing things or, or any number of things, but this board does not discuss these items except for here. Uh, and, and I appreciate it, I, I don't think it was negatively meant, but for us, it's an important thing for us to keep track of. And I, I just wanna mention that we do leave our discussions for up here and we're, we're pretty careful about that. And I also did want to, to mention, uh, to Ms. Maynerich, um, I appreciate you being involved. I don't think me saying that is necessarily gonna make a difference and, and you don't know me, you've seen me in, you know, situations that are, are difficult for you understandably, and I, and I, I get that. But I do appreciate you being here. And there's, I, I can't just discuss all the ways that I compare two different items when they're still ongoing. It wouldn't be proper for those things, but I would just say that I am pretty careful about how I think about things. I'm not gonna say I'm right all the time, but I'm not scared of Meyer and I'm not scared of another corporation. For right or for wrong, the choices I make, they're mine and I'll own them. I'm not saying they're gonna be right or wrong, but it's not because I'm scared of someone's, cause I think it's the right vote for me to take in that circumstance. So that doesn't help you, I get it, I know it's not, does not speak to your concern, but I also want to tell you that, to, to tell you that. That being said, I have no other comments, um, and I will take us on to the next item unless there's any other comments from members. Mr. Box, I think you're the next one up.
No, uh, no comments this evening.
Very good, um, I, again, I've been, I, I decided I was gonna try to do this more. Mr. Orlando, do you have anything you wanted to share with us this evening?
Glad it was a short meeting.
I think we do have, I should mention, I think we do, we did look at our bylaws or we had them, I don't know if you and Mr. Alloy have had a chance to review them. Um, last meeting was not a good time to bring it up and I, I know Mr. Alloy wasn't here this evening. Do you know if he's gone through those, is that something we might see at our next meeting?
I'm not sure. I, he, he provided me with a copy of them, but we haven't had a chance to sit down and discuss them.
Okay, very.
And, and, and based on how the Planning Commission, uh, bylaws took, I'm, I'm anticipating that it won't be a, a, a quick process.
Okay, I will say that the ZBA tends to, uh, tends to ramble on these things, probably less than the Planning Commission does, which, considering I ramble a lot, is, is remarkable since I'm in both places. All right, um, with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Um, motion by Ms. Slosson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Piper, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed by saying nay. At seven thirty-four, this meeting stands adjourned.